Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Statutory Planning Committee of the 16th of October 2025. This meeting has been called to deal with the Stage One Works Effectively for the Women and Babies Hospital. The meeting is being live streamed and recorded, and it will be available for viewing via the Commission's website and YouTube. Committee members may refer to technical devices throughout the system in the information before them. And in opening the meeting, I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the lands of the Wadchuk people of the Ngunnar nation, and pay our respects and orders past and present. Apologies and leave of absence. We do have some apologies today. We have Member Franklin, Member Harmon, and I believe Member Knight as an apologies today. But we do have six members in attendance. We have myself and Commissioner Heron, Commissioner Brooks, and Member Moore in person today, and Commissioner Lakey and Commissioner Dare online. So, welcome all, and welcome to our offices in the room as well. Disclosures of interest. I have received one disclosure in relation to the single item that we're dealing with today, which is the development application for the Women and Babies Hospital Stage One Works. That is from Commissioner Heron. A perceived impartiality interest in that Commissioner Heron has advised that Rebecca Travione from WA Life, who has submitted the deputation request for this item, works for Erbus, his previous employer. Commissioner Heron has also advised that Erbus are acting for the applicant. However, he has not had any involvement with the client or the project. Members, I'm happy to accept that as an impartiality interest. Is there any dissent to that? All agree? Thank you very much. Are disclosures of representation, oh sorry, any further declarations? Or any disclosures of representation? No? Okay, thank you very much. And can all members please indicate that they've received and considered the agenda ahead of today's meeting? Thank you all. We'll now go to deputations. Thanks, Sam.
And good afternoon, and I welcome everyone that's present in order to make a deputation to the Statutory Planning Committee meeting today, either in person or via Zoom. You will be invited to join the table or invited to a panel, promoted to a panelist via Zoom to deliver your deputation this afternoon. There will be a timer which will appear on the screen, which will count down the allocated time for your deputation this afternoon. Moving to the first deputation on the agenda today. On item 3.1 on the agenda, the development application for the Women's and Babies Hospital Stage One Works at Lot 106, Jennelup Street, Murdoch. We're welcoming the City of Melville, and Kate Bainbridge and Dion are joining us online. Good afternoon, Kate. Oh, you should say, good afternoon, Kate. Dion has declined to be promoted as panelist. Were you expecting for Dion to participate this afternoon?
No, no, that's fine. I'm more than okay for to handle this. Thank you so much.
Okay, over to you when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the opportunity to present today. I'm here to represent the City of Melville's interests in this particular development application. Whilst we acknowledge the importance of this particular development and the value it would bring to our community, we have serious concerns about the nature in which this development application is being staged. And we believe that by considering a stage one without appropriate detail, we're predating an outcome which potentially has potential to impact the amenity of the area. We have uncertainties around the alignment with the planning framework due to the staging of the proposal. And we also believe that the forward works may predicate an outcome which may not be appropriate in the context and the potential adverse impact on the amenity of locality. It is our preference to see a more holistic development application, which we may assess more holistically against the applicable planning frameworks and the amenity impacts. So we can ensure that a quality outcome can be achieved for this particular area. The two areas of particular note, under the precautionary principle, which we have considerable concerns, are in relation to the considerable bushfire risk that has impacted this particular site. We understand that a portion of the building will be within a particular high-risk portion of the bushfire zone, and hence will be subject to a performance solution under the National Construction Code. We see that vulnerable land uses are not appropriate in such high-risk areas. And so we really want to see a more robust solution developed prior to considering this development application. And furthermore, we see that the road and traffic safety of the area, being a particularly busy area and a particularly high-traffic-generating land use, needs to see better resolution and more information to be provided upfront with this development application in order for us to feel certain that the traffic generated from this proposal is appropriate and can still provide safe outcomes for our community. So we would much prefer to see this type of development application deferred and holistic development application considered to ensure these particular risks to our community are appropriately addressed prior to this development proceeding. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Kate. It's Emma Cole, Chair, speaking to you now. I assume that you've read the report and seen the advice from DFS that they're happy for this to proceed with a bushfire management plan to come forward with stage two, and that there has been consideration of the BELL ratings across the site and the way in which that will be treated. Have you taken that information on board in considering the deputation that you've provided today?
I don't believe that we will provide that until such time as the agenda was released. But we're happy to work more closely with the proponents to ensure that design meets the necessary bushfire solutions. It's just that without seeing the building design and understanding the necessary performance solution, we have concerns. The NCC provides a minimum standard of building codes and building development, and that performance solution should really develop an as-safe, if not better, outcome. And so that's, we're very risk averse in relation to bushfires. So seeing the building design is something that we're very keen to see to make sure that there's no habitable or active space inside of the areas of substantial risk.
Thanks, Kate. You'd probably also agree that DFS is very risk averse when it comes to fire safety. Yep, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Adair?
Well, thank you, Chair. Kate, I'm a bit curious, because the comments you're making would generally refer to stage two. And of course, we can only make a decision on what's before us today. I understand your concerns and what you're saying. But is there not scope for those items to be considered as?
Commissioner Adair, we've lost the last bit of your question there.
Right, sorry, I'll repeat it. Hopefully you can hear me.
I think it was just the last sentence.
Oh, okay. It's just about whether those things can be considered as part of stage two, and you working with the proponent on those concerns that you have and the mitigation process of doing that.
Thank you through the chair. I guess by considering this forward works package and the scale of the forwards works, we're potentially predating an outcome for stage two. And if the scale of the development cannot be accommodated within the traffic network, for example, then you're looking at potentially would need to have a scaling back of the development, in which case, you know, the entire forward works may need to be re-looked at. So that's, I guess, our position, our preference is to see how more holistic stage, more holistic development application rather than a staged development application. It's very normal to see a staged approach for building purposes, and we welcome that. It's very efficient. And we're very happy to work through a staging of the building process. But a staging of the development application, we're only making a decision on a part of the picture, which has its risks which we're uncomfortable with.
Thank you through the chair. Kate, thank you for your submission. And noting, obviously, what is in, what would happen in an ideal situation versus what we are presented with today. Would you accept that, well firstly, I suppose, that it being a public work and it is on reserve land, that there is a level of scope for that to be considered? And secondly, is there anything that you feel couldn't be conditioned at the appropriate point in time? Like, I take the point that you've made. However, there's nothing, I think, that you've raised that couldn't be managed through appropriate conditions at this stage, unless you can direct me otherwise.
Thank you through the chair. It's actually welcoming to hear that DFS is a lot more supportive than we initially heard and initially our initial conversations were. And we're welcoming opportunities to work more closely with the applicants. We recently attended SDRP2 with the proponents and the State Side Review Panel. And we had a number of our built form concerns addressed through that process. So it is welcoming to see, and if, you know, we do understand the importance of this particular projects and the timeframes around these particular projects need to sort of get a hustle on. So we, you know, if the Chair, sorry, if the WPSA is of a mind to approve, we're more than happy to work through conditions with the proponents.
Thank you. Any further questions, Kate? Thank you very much for your deputation today, Kate.
Thank you very much.
The next deputation this afternoon on the same item, we're welcoming Marcel Baracat, and you'd like to join us at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and the committee. My name is Marcel Baracat. I'm Design Engineering Director for WA Life. And WA Life has been engaged by the state under the managing contractor model to deliver a new women's and babies hospital. It's the state's imperative has been clear from the start that this is a once-in-a-generation investment in women's, newborns, and family health services. And the facility must be available to the public as soon as possible. To achieve that, the delivery model has been structured so that the design, planning, and some early construction work occurs in parallel. To maintain that pathway towards a 2029 opening, the project has been intentionally staged. Stage one early works before you today cover site clearance, piling, slab-on-ground, principally included for pile caps and vertical cores, whereas main works is stage two. We'll include the full hospital building, which will be launched before year's end. The staging allows essential foundation works to commence, while the balance of the main hospital design continues through greater design resolution and further detailed review with GAWA State Design Review Panel and other statutory bodies. The early works footprint and building height is consistent with the Murdoch structure plan, which allows for 80% to 100% of the site coverage and up to 10 stories in land buck locations. Our vertical core, which is in the application, is 65 metres tall, which ultimately is a 12-storey hospital with the mass improvement then further dictated by the functional requirements of the project. The largest continuous floor plate, which is our neonatal beds, and further shaped by the bushfire separation to Moche Park. The adequate setback to the existing early learning centre and sort of to avoid overshadowing and overlooking. Over the past five months, we've worked collaboratively with the state, with ongoing and meaningful engagement with GAWA, with DPLH, with DFS, OMTID, and the Department of Health, of course, as our ultimate client. And the project has been subject to two formal state design review panels and fortnightly designing reviews with the Office of Government Architects. The process has given us comfort that the early works proposal is consistent with the endorsed planning framework and has maintained flexibility for the forthcoming main works DA. On technical and safety considerations, I guess the piling and core locations have been determined to manage structural loading, sequencing, including the cause of this approval to ensure that necessary structural continuity and safety is considered. Without them, grid alignments and slab cores cannot proceed, and subsequent planning for a hospital will be limited. The piling programme is approximately 16 weeks, so early commencement is critical to maintain schedule. With regards to bushfire and NCC 2022 compliance, has been carefully considered. Early works DA has no habitable areas that will trigger state planning policy 3.7. All future habitable areas of a hospital sit within a BELL 19 or lower zone, hence sort of the setback from Moche Park. And only non-habitable plant zones are within sort of the BELL 40 area. And we continue to work with our fire engineering team to ensure adequate fire separation and/or performance solutions are developed in collaboration with DFS. This ensures that the project exceeds equal or safer outcomes against the NCC. In response to the City of Melville's comments, we acknowledge in the city's contribution we should reassure the committee that their matters on bushfire, traffic, and orderly planning have been and continue to be addressed through both technical assessment and staged approvals. Stage one specifically on traffic does not generate any additional operational traffic, and a detailed traffic impact statement and construction traffic management will accompany the main works DA later this year. Temporary parking and access requirements for construction have been identified to avoid local impacts and the needs of the border precinct. Noting I've got no time, the proposal, sort of, we believe has represented a detailed, disciplined, and considered first step. And I guess we thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you very much for your deputation today. I'll just save members' questions for you. Commissioner Heron, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, I mean, my understanding and interpretation based on information within the report is that obviously there's a number of parameters which somewhat fix the floor plate or the template that you have to fit with. So I just wanted to confirm that. Secondly, the one variable, if you like, which depending on context, would be the childcare centre. So is it safe to assume that the childcare centre is to remain and continue to operate?
So the childcare centre will continue to operate. We are working through sort of construction logistics operations to make sure they've got access to adequate parking and safe operations through our construction management plans, which will, there's no risk to safety of people within that.
Thank you. If I may, through the chair, the only other item then is, in terms of then stakeholders and engagement, obviously, there's been the city. But based on the information that we have, I can't see that there's any other private, other than the childcare centre, any other stakeholder that you would need to engage with. Is that a reasonable assumption, or has there been further?
No, that is a reasonable assumption.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, members? This member more?
Just, I think you've already said it, but I just wanted to double or confirm if you've had ongoing engagement with the government architect. And you've had two formal state design review panels. And there's nothing in this DA application that you feel will constrain you for your future?
No, absolutely.
I just wanted to hear that from you.
No, no, we're engaging with GAWA on a fortnightly basis to help drive and ensure that we are aligned.
That you're comfortable that, because it is probably slightly more than we would see, particularly because in a forward work package, just wanted to have a confirm that you don't see, if there were certain things that they would be asking from you, if you're most of those today?
Absolutely, yeah. A lot of the comments commissioned here are beyond sort of these items, these items.
But these items, as approved, won't constrain you, go on?
Absolutely not.
Thank you so much.
So similar question. The report talks to the fact that there's flexibility remains to finalize the substantive development application, which is stage two. So just to kind of emphasize that you're confident that you have that flexibility should be required.
Yeah, absolutely. So the piles themselves have been designed for a greater load than is probably required. We've also set those piles down below the ground floor plates that allows us flexibility of the planning on the ground floor, including entryways, main sort of crossovers, and it's required we finalize that development. We've also been spaced those pile caps to allow us to do any further in-ground works that needs to be happening to further facilitate this report.
Thank you. Members, any further questions? Thank you very much for your deputation. Welcome, Director Jim. All right, so that concludes deputations for today. And we'll now move to consideration of the single item that we're dealing with, which is item 3.1, the development application for Women and Babies Hospital Stage One Works. And I am welcoming Ben Eskers, Catherine Beamish, and Carmel Van Roos, our attending officers. Welcome. Before going to questions from members, I just want to give you the opportunity for any comments or anything you wish to raise in response to deputations.
Thank you, Chair. I think the deputations and the questions asked have done a really good job of fleshing out the key issues with this proposal. So there's nothing that we need to add at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions of the officers? Yes, go ahead, Heron.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to confirm that the risk sits with the applicant, so to speak. So if hypothetically, there were something to emerge through stage two, which were to conflict with the existing, any additional cost or changes to the existing would be, ought to be met by the applicant. Is that correct?
That's very clear, Commissioner. The ESPC's consideration of these early works is only for these early works, and then I might balance the commission. See, it's consideration of any future DA.
Thank you. And secondly, just again reaffirming the fact that the works have been designed, sorry, this is more, I suppose, from the state architect, that the engagement to date has been such that the works are considered to be consistent and congruent for the outcome that has been, I suppose, subject to liaison with the state architects office.
Yes, Commissioner, the proponents have been highly responsive and collaborative with both design support sources fortnightly, also with the design review.
Just to further, just to hear it from officers, you're confident that it provides flexibility for the state who works?
Yes, I'm confident that the floor plates can be finalized.
Very much. Members, any further questions? Any questions? Okay, we'll move to consideration of the item. Please have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Commissioner Heron, moved by Member Moore.
Yes, thank you. I think the proposal before us, obviously, has the limitation of it being a forward works package. And yes, the extent of works would be greater than what would normally be associated with such a package. However, the nature and context of the proposal needs to be considered, that there is clearly deadlines associated with it, that there is, I think, as we've covered off, a level of flexibility that has been incorporated. And it's not as if the rest of the works is highly conceptual, that this is about finalization of that information before it's presented. So I have taken on board the comments made by the City of Melville. However, one, I am confident that the information provided, that there is, the parameters and the footprint have been set, that there is nothing that has been presented that couldn't be managed through the remainder of the design process through conditions or other ones. And I think it is appropriate for us to enable and facilitate the outcome of, obviously, significant investment by the state.
Here, Member Moore?
I was just gonna, I agree with everything that Commissioner Heron's just said. But I would say I'm very encouraged by the close engagement that the team have had. I was also very pleased to hear that the City of Melville has been involved in the state design. Recent. recent design review process. I think that should alleviate their concerns about the built form, so. Particularly if it means that we can be done in a very time-efficient manner.
Member Moore, do members wish to make any comment? Yes, Commissioner Dare?
Thanks, Chair. I support the application. I did take, you know, into account what the City of Melville has had to say. And yes, a more holistic approach may be ideal, but we can only deal with the application that is in front of us. And all the information that's been provided and the questions that have been asked and answered provide me with enough confidence to support this application, that we're not inhibiting future D As that may come forward. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Very much, Commissioner Dare. Any further comments? Can I just state that we are dealing with a public hospital reservation here, and this is wholly consistent with the intent of that. I think that when you look at the floor plate, that is very respectful and understanding of the site constraints and has been positioned to respect the childcare centre, to deal with bushfire. It is set back in accordance with some of the climate support particular, under this particular activity centre. It provides the flexibility, as we've heard, for consideration of the stage two substantive development application. And the bushfire risks are well articulated in the report. I think it's really important to emphasise that that has been considered in detail and that D F S supports and is comfortable with the position with a full bushfire management plan to come forth with a stage two application, but also noting that all Bell ratings have been considered, that the N C C has been considered, that where there is that Bell rating that we would not have habitable, that is where you've got the functions of the building that are non-habitable and are totally separated from the rest of the main hospital building. So those are critical considerations that have, that have formed part of our decision-making today. I also just want to note that, given that the next stage will be the substantive development application, that will be determined by the W A P C, that part will be publicly advertised, will have the full elevations. People will see and get a feel for what the hospital functionality will and will look like. So that this report will go to the W A P C for noting endorsement in preparation and as background for their future decision in relation to the stage two works. Are there any further comments? Is there any dissent? Thank you very much. Very proud to approve the stage one works for Women and Babies Hospital. So that concludes our business for today, unless there's any urgent business to raise. Okay, thank you very much all for today, and I'll close the meeting at two minutes.